Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Went. I'm the chairman of this board. I will call to order the October 7th, 2025, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Joining, just for the sake of expediency, joining me are regular members Ben Maene, Ron Stelmack, and Christina McPhail, and alternate member Brendan Liberati, who will be seated for Sarah Harris, and our staff planning and zoning administrator Kathleen Gallagher as well. We have two matters on the agenda for those of you that are applicants or those other interested parties. There are five votes on the zoning board of appeals, and it requires four affirmative votes to approve an application. So a three to two vote for approval, while a majority is not an approval, you need a four to one majority. With that, we will take the matters in order, but I will ask Kathleen to read the public hearing notice, so then we can begin with our public hearing matters.
In accordance with the Connecticut general statutes H-7D, a public hearing will be held on October 7th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via fully remote Zoom meeting for ZBA 2025-04, file number 143448 Twinbrook Terrace. I'm going to do them both, and ZBA 2025-05, file number 1423 for 23, file number 1435 for 23 Chadwick Court, published in the CT Post Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, and Tuesday, September 30th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. So we will go straight to it, to our first public hearing matter, which is 48 Twinbrook Terrace, is the applicant or their representative on board with us?
Yes.
I'm going to promote you to a panelist. That will give you, you have to accept it, and that should give you the availability to share your video. But do you need to share your screen? And do you have anybody else with you? You are muted right now.
How about now? Do you see me? There I am. Yeah, I have my architect and builder with me, who is more familiar with this process, so he's here to kind of assist me with answering any questions that I may not have familiarity on. So his name is also Manny. So he's at De Silva, I'm at Gomes. So that's how you could differentiate us. Thank you.
But I don't need to promote anybody else to?
No, he's here with me in the same room.
He's perfect. Okay, perfect.
Go ahead. Why don't you explain your proposal, what you're proposing, and why you're seeking relief from this board?
Hi all. My name is Manuel De Silva. I'm the owner of De Silva Design and Construction out of Shelton. I'm going to be working with Manny Gomes on this project. What we're seeking is a variance for the front yard setback and coverage. And what Manny is attempting to do is merely create a slightly larger foyer. He had no foyer, so he wants to create a little foyer at his house, just to create a little more of a grander entrance, and a small porch to add to the character of the house, because it's very bland, a ranch with, you know, one straight line roof. So we're looking to add a small porch and a little, a four-foot addition for a foyer, just to get a coat closet and just get a little relief to the living room inside. And I believe that here we have a clear case of hardship, because the house, as it sits on the land right now, it's currently non-conforming. So this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The house sits at 49 point something feet from the front. So no matter what we try to do, we would require a variance for that front lot line. And as you can see from the architectural drawings, we're actually enhancing the look of the house and the character of the neighborhood with the front porch and the roof lines. And I believe that we're not going to detract from the value of any of the neighboring properties, so this is not going to have any detrimental effect to the neighboring properties. And I hope that you guys look favorably on this and approve it, because it's very miniscule nature to the size of this lot and the fact that, you know, it's a pre-existing non-conforming situation that we have here. So, I mean, as you can see from the plans, we're adding a coat closet, a little more of a relief area as you enter the house. And then at the same time, to give it character, we added that front porch, you know, because it's a nice serene neighborhood, and it's nice to have that front porch to, you know, enjoy the surroundings. So, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions of the applicant?
I do.
Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. As I look at the balance of the neighborhood, it appears everyone is approximately right on that setback point. You're about 0.4 feet off it, but not different than anyone else as you go down the street.
Right.
Correct? Right? So the neighborhood's homogenous, and it all looks the same. So everybody's facing the same issues, which is really a zoning issue.
Yes, because this is prior to zoning regulations, probably, when these houses were built. And now we have new rules, and anything we try to do, we're required to go before you.
Okay, fair point. So your claim for hardship is that when the house was constructed, it was under a different set of zoning regulations. And the change in zoning regulations have now usurped the use of the property that you would have expected to have had you purchased the house during the prior zoning regulations.
Yes.
Is that the case? I miss that in me.
Yeah, that's the case. And no matter what we try to do in that front to just give it a little, you know, if we, to fulfill the needs of Mr. Gomes enjoying the house, no matter what we try to do in the front, we're going to need a variance, because it's already a little bit beyond the setback line.
Now, I'll add that the, it's, the front of the house is pretty flat. There's like a half stair, then a full stair. The landing is pretty small. When there's a family that's, even when my family arrives at the house, we open the storm door. We have to kind of step back away from the stairs to open the storm door, then open the front door. Then once we enter the inside of the house, it's a typical ranch home. There's almost no room there. And we're kind of trying to, at the same time, future-proof this in the event that my mother-in-law requires assisted living. We're trying to make it so that's, that we're able to kind of stay in this home in the event that she is no longer able to walk on her own and requires wheelchair assistance. The layout we have just is not conducive to that.
I think it is absolutely admirable from a care-for-the-family standpoint, what you're doing, and also your foresight on the economics of, I'm going to be putting a new roof in, et cetera, right?
Correct.
What I wrestle with in all of the cases is we do not set the planning and zoning concept. Someone, the planning and zoning board goes, okay, this is what we want to see in this zone. We want everybody to be able to count on it being persistent throughout owners, right? A variance to go kiss with one person, it goes on forever with that property. And the adjacent property owners in that zone have a right to expect that a certain set of rules will be followed, and a certain appearance will be there, right?
There has been modifications to this neighborhood in terms of, like, single-family ranch homes being converted to colonials, which is atypical of the neighborhood. There's been a couple that's happened, and not on my direct street, but on the streets. It's kind of like a horseshoe on my street. So there's multiple, and I have seen multiple homes over the years, since I've been here for 15 years, expand the front stairways, make them a little larger. And some have even kind of enclosed a portion, increased the size of the front entrance with a kind of enclosed doorway. So again, I'm not sure if they did it through permitting purposes or not. That's beyond my grasp of understanding. But I think that the scope of this neighborhood has already kind of, is evolving and maturing to a point where I'm not sure if what I'm asking for is going to really change the landscape of the neighborhood in terms of what other people are perceiving should be kind of the landscape of the neighborhood. I think I'm evolving with it, is how I view it on my own. Because I have seen the neighborhood transforming, and it's, I think it's going to continue to transform as the cost of housing stays where it is, and people just choose to modify their existing properties versus sell and buy.
Okay. What I'm, all right. So what I'm, again, what I'm wrestling with is under Connecticut state law. We have to find something that's intrinsic in the property that is precluding your fair use of it, that is different than the surrounding property. For example, an extremely narrow lot, something of that sort. You certainly haven't created any problems of your own here, but I'm trying to find a substantial hardship that would justify granting the variance. And I'm having difficulty identifying that. The hardship cannot be emotional. It cannot be financial. It must be a hardship that causes your fair use of that property not to exist or not to be achievable because of something that's unique to that property compared to the rest of the properties in the zone. And that's where I was trying to reach.
Well, I would say my property is, the property line is a little bit on an angle. So I, yeah, it's a little different. If you look at it, it's kind of like, kind of a little bit of an angle where one side of the house does sit already closer to the street line versus the other side of the home. So it's already kind of not characteristic in terms of like a kind of a, like a rectangle or square kind of sitting. It's already kind of on the slant, on the slant. So one section of my house is already kind of breaching further into the setback requirements versus the other section of the house. You know, one side, I should say, of the house to the other side.
You purchased this property in what year?
2010. I've been for 15 years.
If I, if I may, Ron, I have a question. They're not questions so much, but I did, I'm looking at the survey, and I do see the point that you just made, that your property lines seem to be at 90-degree angles. So your property lines are parallel to each other, but the house itself isn't parallel to the street line. It's skewed a little bit. So the left, the garage side sits back a little, it's canted a little bit, so it's on a little bit of an angle. Ron, I agree with you to some degree with respect to the nature of hardship and all those things. And I, and the, and I will also say, in looking, I agree with your analysis that there are similarly situated properties, and that's one of the things that we should be mindful of when we look. Hey, if this, if this gets approved, are there others that could be asking, you know, in line essentially to ask the same question? But I tend to not dwell, and I know what the statutes say, and I know what the law is, but I look at, hey, what's best for the neighborhood? And I think, in my view, this is a pretty minimalistic approach. I would have reservations if this was a more aggressive proposal that protruded farther into the setback or wasn't kind of the minimum necessary to accomplish the objective that this homeowner is looking to accomplish. And perhaps I would agree with you from a strict hardship test. If we apply that across the board, it's going to be, you know, it's a high bar. And it probably should be, but I always look, the statute has two prongs to it, right? There's strict hardship or practical difficulty, and it's canted a little bit. I don't have a problem with it, because in my view, I think the neighborhood overall would benefit from this improvement. It's reinvestment into a property, and I think that's a good thing for a neighborhood whose houses are probably built in the 60s or so, or maybe even earlier than that. And I see this as a kind of a minimalistic approach. And while it may not meet the strict hardship test, I think what I look at as a homeowner and a neighbor, not of this property, but just in general, is, hey, would my neighborhood benefit from this? And in the long run, I'd agree with you that if there's a continuing pattern of relief that this board continues to grant for certain circumstances, in the long run, you're absolutely correct. That would give rise, I think, to saying, okay, perhaps the planning and zoning commission ought to consider a tweak to the regulations if we're constantly approving the same type of variance. This lot is not undersized. It's an acre, but I think, you know, had the, had they created this parallel to the property line, maybe it still needs a variance, but only by, you know, a foot or two. So while I'm sensitive to what you're saying, Ron, I don't, I'm, I think this to me is, would, I think that the neighborhood would benefit from this proposal. That's how, that's how I see the distinction between legal hardship and in the practical role that we play as folks that are tasked with, hey, should this get relief from the regulations or not? That's just my view of it.
I also have two pieces of information to add, just for clarification. I do believe the house was built in 1963, so when we take that into consideration of when the house was built. Two, this was not emphasized by the applicant, but when we talk about coverage, yes, they're asking to go from our existing regulation of 15% to 18.6%, but their existing coverage, which is permitted because it was built prior to the regulations in the RF1 zone where it was changed from 15% of building coverage to 15% site coverage, they're actually going, the ask is from 18.2% of a pre-existing non-conforming coverage to 18.6%. So from the coverage perspective, when we talk about, you know, the word minimal had been used, I do want to just make that clarification, that they're going from 18.2% to 18.6%, which is four tenths of a percentage point. And then the last item is that I do see Margaret Lee, this is housekeeping, joined. I have asked to promote you to a panelist, and you continue to deny it. So I'm going to do it one more time. So I asked to promote you to a panelist. You have to accept it. And then that allows you to join the meeting in a way where you can mute and unmute yourself and show your video.
Well, that's ongoing. Are there any other board members that have any questions on this matter?
Can you hear me, Kathleen?
Yes. Can you accept?
Yes.
If you could promote to panelist?
Yes, and I apologize. I was having an awful time trying to log in, so I apologize to the entire board.
Okay, it just said you declined it again, so.
No, I didn't. I didn't, because I wasn't even on, so.
No, it has said three times since you have been on, you continue to decline it. So I hit promote to panelist. You have to accept to be panelist.
Oh, you mean as a permanent standing member?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Well, you're here for the sake of discussion, but we have four regular members, and Brendan is sitting for Sarah at this point.
And understood. I cannot join at this time, because the meeting has already been.
No, you can join, and you can still participate. Okay.
When we get that, yeah, you can participate in the hearing, but when we get to the deliberative session, if you're not one of the five members, then you cannot participate in that discussion.
Okay, but just for clarification, you denied becoming a panelist again. So that means when you mute yourself, you are not going to be able to unmute yourself. So unless you accept promote to panelist, which I am.
I see her up on the board now, so.
She's on her attendee, though, which means if she mutes herself, she's never going to be able to unmute herself unless I grant her access.
Okay.
So you've been invited to be promoted to panelist. A pop-up should have happened, and you need to accept it.
Okay, okay, then I shall do that.
Beautiful. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Ron, I didn't mean to cut you off if you were, if you were continuing.
No, 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 I was looking for that, I was looking for that sort of thing. And thank you very much, Kathleen, sorting out the 15 versus 22% because that was coming up. Geez, I apologize. I usually get something checked out, and I did not. When did the regulations change to a 50-foot setback?
And you know what? Based on your questions, I knew you were going to ask me that. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I think if he purchased the property in 2010, I'm fairly confident that they were 50 feet in 2010.
Yeah, I'm thinking 87, but okay.
Yeah, I believe that the reason I didn't look it up was because I don't believe it's around that date. But at this point, we get enough of these front yard setbacks. I should really know that off the top of my head at this point.
I would agree. I think it was prior to the current owner's tenure on the property.
Also, there's a Kevin who is raising his hand. I just want to make sure from the applicant's team, he's not with you at this time?
No.
No.
Okay, so Kevin, if you are here for public participation, we just haven't gotten to that part yet. And we will allow you to speak once we get to public participation.
I guess my question to the applicant, have you approached your neighbors on this proposal?
Yes, I have.
And what was their reaction?
They were like, that's great. That sounds like you'll make the front of the house look better. There was addition put on the house prior to me purchasing it, so they took, they kind of lengthened it quite a bit. So where the front entrance is, it kind of, it kind of looks like a really, kind of just long with some windows. So it doesn't really have much
Character.
Character. So they felt that that little front would make the house look better, and the curb appeal improved. You know, at least the neighbors I spoke to, which is, you know, all of my surrounding neighbors. And, and yeah, they've been my neighbors for over a decade now, most of them. Those that have been living in their homes. So I'm blessed. I have a lot of original owners still in the neighborhood. Some of them have been passing away, which is kind of sad, because they've been in their houses for too long. But yeah, I have great neighbors here.
Anybody else?
But the public notice was sent. I mailed them with longer timeframes than was necessary, so that they could all kind of approach me if they had any other, like some of the, like the one behind my house, I never really talked to, because he's on a different street. It sounded like I crossed by him. So I mailed everything out with, I think, considerable notice for them to approach me if they had any questions. I didn't do it the bare minimum timeframe.
Staff did not receive any letters, phone calls, or comments related to it?
Am I allowed to speak at this point? I'm not sure.
You are.
Oh, okay, fine. I went out and looked at the product property as well. I did that today. And the entire neighborhood is, having been built about the same time, has similarly small front, I keep calling it a landing pad, but you know what I mean, top step. It seemed to me that while I appreciate the current owner wanting to expand the house, it seemed to me that the actual need, as expressed, was for a larger front step. That would accommodate the need to be able to open and close the front door without having any kind of intrusion. And other small properties over there have done something similar, although most of them have not. They just haven't upgraded yet. Putting on an addition to the house, which intrudes further into the setback area, really isn't necessary in order to accommodate the expressed need. And to make it a covered porch as well, really does intrude on the setback to the extent of basically another 10 feet, and more than that. So my argument would be that our business as a zoning board of appeals is
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Margaret, but do you have a question for the applicant here?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is question for the applicant time. I'm sorry.
Right. I mean, again, we can, well, we'll deliberate when we're
No, you're absolutely right, Jim.
You're making an argument to us, but.
I'm getting myself confused. I do apologize.
That's okay. I'm just trying to move to see if there's any more questions for the applicant, and then we'll get into the.
Totally correct. Totally correct.
I don't mean to cut you off. If you have a question for the applicant, I'm happy to have that.
You would express a desire to accommodate some eventuality possible, where a family member might need to be able to live with you because she's not well-capacitated, and you wanted to have a part of that, extending that area to include a porch as being a sitting area. But does she not have a patio on the back of the house with, that is also covered, that would certainly accommodate her desire potentially and need to sit outside and enjoy the landscape?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not quite understand the question. I understand the question. I don't understand how it was the answering that, if they could sit out back versus out front, you know, where they're looking at trees versus being able to converse with passing neighbors or see people walking their dogs, or, you know, feel like they're just not stuck in a home or, you know, stuff like that. I think there's a lot of kind of mental benefits to being, facing people and having conversations with the neighbors versus being in the back. So I get what you're saying. I think from a quality-of-life standpoint, it makes more sense to afford them the opportunity to kind of be, you know, where they, I won't say where they want to be, but I think I, you know where I'm going with this. Yes, can I just have her sit in the back patio? Yeah, I'm not saying this can't, but if I'm entertaining the scope of a project like this, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to kind of get a couple of things that you would like to improve your home out of the way at the same time. And having kind of a covered porch area for when I arrive in the house and not fighting to get out of the elements, or when guests come by, they have a place to not be out of the elements where, you know, where they wait for me to greet them or come to the door, or even like to, you know, drop out packages, having an area where the package is to kind of stay dry, especially nowadays with Amazon cardboard. I mean, I think that's something that would be nice to have if it's possible. And I guess the possibility of that lies on the board here today. So when we put this together, I feel we took the most minimistic approach to kind of coming up with what we would have desired to stay in this home long term. And I would have liked the entrance to be a little larger, but I understood the setback. And I phased, I scaled it back as much as I felt comfortable doing. Now, any smaller than this, it wouldn't merely make sense to actually do the project, in my opinion. And I do think that what we're seeking to do here would actually improve the, kind of, the look to the neighborhood. I think we're doing a positive spin on this. Would it improve the property? I have no intention to sell this property anymore. The cost of doing this doesn't make sense versus selling the property and moving. You know, I love the neighborhood. That's why I want to do this and stay here. So I hope that answers your question, Margaret?
To some extent. Quando I will always run into, of course, with a situation such as yours, is that anybody can then go ahead and ask for larger and larger front porches that are really not needed and include getting the setback when actually the state zoning regulations are pretty clear about it being an actual definite hardship.
That's okay. I will, I've done.
That rests with us. I mean, again, if this board thinks it's too big an ask, then we certainly have the authority to say no to any application.
Just clarify one thing. The covered porch is not really, what we're trying to do is, is kind of take the line with the stairs, which would be encroaching into the variance on point any which way, while the stairs, I'm not sure if that's included or not included in the variance setback, but we're trying to just cover that area with the stairs and going across the house. So it's not like we're approaching any further into the front of the house with it, if that makes sense. It's not like we're adding beyond the stairs to cover a larger area, if that makes sense.
What he means is the existing landing protrudes into the front yard setback already, and the porch is merely a few feet beyond that, which is basically taking the same amount of space. Obviously, it's a much larger structure with the porch. But in any event, we do, due to the nature that the house is not perpendicular to the property lines, it's skewed, due to the nature that the house is already non-conforming as it is, we have a case for hardship. I know it's up to you guys to approve it, and that's why we're here. You have to see that. We have a case for hardship. I I know it's up to you guys to approve it and and that's why we're here. You you have to see that. Are we asking for too much? Are we asking for too little? I think we're not asking for a lot here, uh. And I know that, yes, it could create a precedent for other neighbors to do the same, but they have to come before you. And uh, then you will look at it and if it makes sense, you will approve it. And if it doesn't, it you don't. So. I think we should look at all these cases individually. And I believe we did the most minimalistic approach to get a little entrance foyer and a little porch. The porch is, yes, it's going to serve a function for his in-laws, but it's it's mainly for character. That house is an. Oversized ranch with one roof line. It 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 looks hideous right now, and I think this will enhance it. So any neighbor that that is uh on the outskirts of this property is not going to be opposed to this. So I I hope again that you guys look favorably on this because it's so miniscule that. Um, I hope you you approve it, actually.
Christine, I see your hand up. Do you have a question?
I do. Um, this was touched upon before, I think, but. The way I look at this is more how you look at this, the practicality of it also for the use of the home. And also what it does for the neighborhood. So clearly, they're asking for a variance on something that's already nonconforming. The variance itself is minimal, I think. But the bigger part of it for me is if if you ask the neighbors, and this is improving the property itself. The neighbors seem to be um, for the change or for the the building of it. Or for the changes added to the house. I just wanted to know. Um, was a letter sent out? How were they contacted? Because I know you said that they were, you know, pro, you know, they were for it. So I just wanted to know if letters were sent out and how they communicated their feelings about the change.
Yeah, I have a couple of Facebook messages from a couple of neighbors. Others called me, others stopped me, kind of. Well, they saw me outside. I'm I'm always outside doing yard work. But uh, the notice of, uh, the letter was provided to me by Kathleen's office. And I mailed it, uh, not certified. What's the other word?
No, you, uh, certificate of mailing. So we required you to do a certificate of mailing. So basically, they mail it regular mail. Because certified mails means someone has to sign for it. And to be honest, we have figured out that a lot of people. Like have to take a half a day off of work to sign for it. So he did submit the certificate of mailings um for that. And they have to notice within a hundred feet of their property.
Perfect. And nobody, you know, replied saying no, they were against uh making these changes. Nobody said that, right?
Nobody contacted staff.
Print the Facebook postings of the people that were going, that were in favor.
If 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 I need to uh provide a, you know, if I need to go around and ask someone for a letter saying that they reviewed the plans and. They think it will improve.
That it's going to beautify the neighborhood.
I I do not believe I have any problem at all.
Yeah, I just, for me, you know, living in Monroe, um, if it's going to add to the value of the neighborhood, that's a big deal to me. Um, and if it's practical, but I just wanted to make sure that the notice was sent out or if letters were sent out and if nobody opposed. And if there were um affirmative responses.
No, no, no negative feedback to this yet at all. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members have any questions? Okay, we will move on. Is there anyone uh that's joining us in this meeting that wishes to be heard on this matter? Either for or against or has a question? Is there anybody in online uh that wishes to be heard on this? Going once, going twice.
Yes, hold on one moment. All right, so Kevin, I have allowed you to speak, which means you need to unmute yourself. Um, and then you should be able to speak.
Um, hi, how are you? Um, thank you for allowing me to be in the meeting. Um, just please, uh, um, I'm here just to inquire. I'm not.
Sorry, just just for the record, sir, could you just give us your name and address, please?
Sure. Uh, my name is Kevin Kanjo, and I live at twenty Lover's Lane in Monroe. And uh, I'm uh, I'm one of the neighbors. And uh, I received um a letter a couple of days ago. Um, talking about this project, but I really, I don't understand the terms because um, you know, I don't work on construction. So I really didn't understand like what this is all about. So I just wanted to know, like, actually, just if you can please, like, shed the light about, like, you know, um, and I'm and I'm sorry, also, I missed. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting, so and maybe you.
Not a problem. I I I can, I don't know if Kathleen, if you have the ability to put the plan up or not, but. I see from the survey, sir, that you are a budding neighbor to the rear of this property.
Correct.
Um, the addition that this applicant is proposing i- is on the front of the house. Uh, to do a small enclosed entryway and then a an overhanging porch with a roof. In the relief that he is seeking is to be a little bit closer to the street than what the regulations would otherwise permit. Um, so it's all of the work that's being proposed is in the front of the the front of the house.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
I don't know if 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 I'm happy to, we can continue, but if that answers your question, I don't know if we can put the.
No, actually.
On the screen or not.
Uh, well, actually, tha- thank you for explaining. No, I just wanted to to clarify because because when I read the letter, it says that actually. Um, that um, um, that the letter, like, you know, like, I mean, that project, you know, like, um, since. Like you said, since we are, you know, like adjacent to the property. So when I read the letter, I thought that something's going to build, like, at the borderline of 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 our property. So I just wanted to inquire that, that's it. But actually, uh, congratulation. I wish you the very best luck, you know, like it's uh, yeah, I mean, the they've been always nice neighbors and uh. And uh, you know, like, I just wanted to clarify, just to make sure, you know, like what's.
Well, that's that's why these are public meetings and uh, and we appreciate your participation.
If you want to give me one moment, I can bring it up. Unfortunately, when we, I need to um. I need to log into my computer. Because I don't have access to the server. Let me bring up the site. And I'm gonna zoom in. Cause I do want to make sure that you fully understand. All right, here we go. So this is the existing house. And there is an existing landing in gray in the front. That's going to be removed. And then there is a proposed porch with a roof. Um, that's here and then a proposed one-story addition. That's the gray portion. So this little box in the gray is the landing. And this bigger box that's bolder that has the entire shading of the gray is going to be the area. So this dashed line that they have is the. Current setback, which has to be fifty feet from the property line. They're looking to encroach into that setback by ten feet. Um, so they'll still have forty feet from the front property line to the step. Um, but then they are looking to build a small addition. And a twenty foot by nine foot porch.
Yeah, thank you so much for the explanation. And uh, um, yeah, tha- thank you so much. That was very helpful, actually. I I really appreciate it. Um, again, you know, like I was just wanted just to to inquire, just because I I didn't really understand what's going on. And uh, thank you.
That's absolutely why these meetings are open to the public, for anybody to ask these questions. So thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Uh, is is there anyone else from the public that wishes to be heard on this matter?
I gotta go back to. Nobody else has their hand raised.
Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this matter and then move on to the next file. Uh, which is twenty-three Chadwick Court, uh, for a property line variance for proposed pool. Is the applicant or their representative for Chadwick Court present?
Yep, hold on, promote to panelist to Kevin. Beautiful. And then there's a Dr. Sandra on as well. I don't know if they're associated with the applicant team.
Thank you for allowing me to participate. Have a good day.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So Kevin Cohen, you should be able to unmute yourself um and turn on your camera if you so wish. Doesn't look like that has occurred quite yet. Nope, yep, Manny, I'm going to.
Can you hear me? It's, the camera's not working.
We can hear you.
So um, my name is Kevin Cohen. I'm uh with N J and Sons Pool Company on behalf of uh the homeowner. And what we're looking to do is put in a in-ground pool eighteen by thirty-eight in the backyard. And due to this, I mean, it is a big property, but due to the topography and the outcroppings of ledge throughout the property. Um, the spot that the pool in is really the only, you know, place where there's minimal rock or or no rock sticking out of the ground. Um, you know, conducive to put a pool in and, you know, in that spot, we're asking for a fourteen foot. Um, variance to be sixteen off that side property line opposed to the thirty foot uh required setback.
I have a question. And in looking at the map, um, it appears that you got a hundred and twenty-seven feet to the other property line. And um, what would it take to move that pool over so that you wouldn't need to encroach into the setback?
So there's a big outcropping of ledge right where it says proposed patio. And then after that, it's a it's a cliff. It's a drop off down to the other property line.
How about to this, to the side of the residence?
Yeah, that's all, that's a big steep hill from that. So the driveway from the road, it's. It's probably a, you know, forty, fifty foot grade difference from the driveway up to the house.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions?
Um, and I just want to make, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to make one thing clear. There's actually two variances that they're asking for. So the way our zoning regulations are written, they're asking for the proximity of the pool to the side yard setback. Um, which is six feet. We also will not allow patios to be closer than ten feet. To the property line when they are attached to a structure. Um, and building, when they're attached to a building. So because the patio is neither attached to a building. Like a pool house or an actual house. Um, and it is six feet from the property line. They are also asking relief from that. So just to make it clear. They are asking for two variances, one for the location of the pool and one for the location of the patio. So relief from thirty feet to sixteen feet for the pool and relief from. Technically nothing, but let's say ten feet to six feet for the for the patio.
Okay, I have a follow-up question, I suppose. I said, what, has there been any consideration to. Flipping the orientation of the pool? So that the long axis is perpendicular to the house rather than parallel. To me, just in in looking at it on paper. This seems like a um, a big intrusion into this. Unlike. My my view of the last case, uh, I think this one, uh, at least looking at it on paper seems to be a bit. Uh, much of an intrusion into the setback and whether that pool couldn't be turned ninety degrees. And perhaps made a little smaller to fit better within the setback. Do you do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, so right behind the garden, there's a a big outcropping of ledge, you know, fifteen, sixteen feet above the grade there. And it goes far back from that point on. So we actually entertained that because that's, we wouldn't have needed a variance and come before the board. But because of the topography and the rock everywhere, that's the only spot it could really go.
No, but you can't turn the pool ninety degrees so that it's oriented differently and get it closer to the deck and the screen porch?
That's then you'll, right where that garden is, right behind that garden, there's a outcropping of rock. It it won't fit.
Well, it won't fit at eighteen by thirty-eight, but. Okay.
Yes, that would have been my question as well is could not, this is Margaret. Uh, could not the, could could the pool simply be made smaller so that it doesn't, isn't so intrusive? Which might very well feed into Kevin, to um, James, Jim's uh suggestion of flipping it.
Yeah, I mean, once you flip it, you'd have to take off about ten, twelve feet, you know, to have adequate room between between the deck and the pool. Without hitting that rock. And I think, you know, you you'd be talking about a sixteen by twenty-six, you know, size, size pool.
May I ask, please, again, Margaret, what is the actual? Need to have the pool at all? Such that it wouldn't, such that it would justify uh overriding the zoning regulations?
Uh, the homeowners are are looking to put in a pool. They've talked to, you know, numerous neighbors and contacted the owners of the neighboring properties that are not developed. And they are strictly woods at the moment, and and uh, nobody had any issues with it. Um, they were for it. We sent out all the letters to all the properties, um, and and known, you know, nobody was against it.
Well, um. That doesn't really uh satisfy the question of whether it's an actual need. As opposed to a want, unless you could perhaps help me out with that?
Well, it's it's a swimming pool, so it, you know, it is a leisure item. It's not a, you know, a a necessity.
Yes.
You know, that's, it is a swimming pool.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So just to clarify, so if you made the pool smaller, you would not need any of these variances?
It it would have to be, uh, you know, very small, where it's not conducive to the homeowners. You know, they have three children. Um, the wife did just have back surgery, so she did want to swim laps in the pool. Um, it just wouldn't be, you know, size-wise. You know, long enough to achieve what their goals are.
Um, did you say they could do, the pool would be sixteen by twenty-six?
Yeah, the measure, yeah, to go ten feet off the deck and you'd have to fit it between the deck and the the garden, because right abutting that garden is. A ton of ledge going all the way towards the rear of the property.
And the, and again, Margaret, um, and the wife does has have access if if you're going to, since you mentioned. Back surgery, she does have access to other swimming facilities, correct? Where she can get physical therapy for that back. So the pool isn't really needed, is it?
I I would say it is, because with childcare and being home, it's much more ease and evidently just to do it at your own home. And in your own comfort than.
I think just respectfully, I would suggest that we stray away from any personal nature of the application and.
I'm sorry.
Focus on how it relates to the to the property in question here.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Is this a brand new build uh in two thousand and fifteen, I guess? They bought the property this way? I mean, they had it built this way. Is this a new build or is it?
They bought, no, this was, they bought the property existing. Um, it's it's older than twenty fifteen.
Any other questions for board members?
The house was built in two thousand.
Okay. Is there anybody uh online, Kathleen, do you think that might be, I'll ask the question. Um, if there's no other questions from the board members, is there any member of the public present that wishes to be heard on this application?
If you are, we ask that you utilize your raise your hand function. Um, and then we can permit you to speak.
It doesn't look like there's any participation. If there's no other, uh, Mr. Cohen, do you have anything further to say? Or are we okay to wrap up this?
I just, I mean, I don't know if if you guys have looked at the property. There's really, you know, nowhere else to put it. It it would be more detrimental to the property and the characteristic of the property to rock hammer, you know, and blast ledge. Or take down, you know, a a ton of trees of woods and slopes. Um, I think this is the least detrimental to the property while maintaining the character of the existing property, so it's not visible from the road. I think this is the least detrimental to the property while maintaining the character of the existing property. So it's not visible from the road. Just just my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else before we close? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this matter and go back to our balance of the agenda, which is deliberations on these particular items. We will start with where we started with the matter on Twin Brook Terrace. And again, sorry, Margaret, that now that we are in deliberative session, it's just the five seated members that are participating at this stage.
Thank you, understood.
Does anybody have a motion to make before we discuss? Just for the purpose of discussion on forty-eight Twin Brook Terrace? Nobody?
I can make a motion to approve to approve of the variances requested to permit forty-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required fifty. And then to permit seventeen point six percent property coverage.
It's actually eighteen point six.
A motion to approve is good enough. Is there is there is there a second to Brendan's motion to approve? Christine, seconds. So motion by, all right. So now that we have the motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion, Brendan?
Yeah, for me, the the home was built, I believe it was in nineteen sixty-three. It was prior to existing regulations. From what I can tell, it's exceptionally difficult to build on this site, particularly in the front without the use of a variance. Neighbors seem to be in agreement with the project. It is a small-scale project. They could have, you know, designed something that was much larger in scale. In my eyes, this will also enhance the character of the neighborhood. So that's why I'm in favor of the variance.
Thank you. Christina is the second there of this. Do you have anything to add to that?
More of the same. It feels like it's a practical upgrade. The neighbors seem to be in favor, and I do think it will beautify the neighborhood substantially.
I agree. I think this this small addition would be a handsome upgrade to this house. I think the neighborhood would really benefit from it. So I'm prepared to support it myself. Ben or Ron, do you have anything to add before we vote?
No, I I concur with what's been said.
Ron?
Ryan, you are muted.
Thank you for the heads up on mute. Didn't realize that. Okay, thanks. No, you've convinced me, so. Prepare to vote.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion approved, say aye or raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
I see five hands. That's a unanimous approval. Twenty-three Chadwick Court, just again, for the sake of discussion, does anybody want to put a motion on the on the floor for this item?
I motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Again, just for discussion purposes at this point?
I'll second.
Okay, Ron, thank you. Motion to approve by Christine is seconded by Ron. Christine, go ahead.
I just feel that the the hardship would be to turn that pool in that way would be an awkward setup, even though it would comply with the regulations. The 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 lot being rocky and having that decline makes it an awkward location to put a pool anywhere on that property in the backyard, but where they actually have it. That's the best thing. And just with the cost of putting in a pool like that, an in-ground pool is an inordinate amount of money to put in. So if if they want to put in a bigger pool, you know, versus a smaller pool, it's good for the family. And it'll enhance the property value as well.
Okay, Ron? If you're not ready, that's fine. It's you seconded it for the sake of discussion. You're not bound to vote one way or the other, but.
Okay, so on the backside, there's quite a bit, there's quite a distance between where this pool would go and the neighbor who abuts on the pool side of the property. So crowding that line, not all that significant as a negative. The presence of the rock croppings, quite honestly, would have been nice to see a contour drawing depicting all of that. So I'm going to accept the analysis that because of the rock and the amount of blasting that would be required to make the property useful for the pool is as it was stated by the owner and the owner's representative. Rotating that pool and reducing the size of it at first struck me as okay, a possible solution. But if I understood the response to that, it would require cutting that pool by more than half, if I remember the numbers.
I think he said sixteen by twenty-six instead of eighteen by twenty, thirty-eight.
Yeah, I believe he said approximately a ten-foot cut.
I won't do the square footage calculation, but reduce a reduced size. I'm kind of still trying to decide on this. So I'm open to comments from other people.
Okay, well, I will say, I, you know, when I looked at this, when I opened up the paper and looked at the plans, my initial gut reaction was, wow, this is this is a little too much. I thought it was a little bit big and a little bit too close to the property line. Sixteen feet is fairly close because the pool comes with a lot of other ancillary activity, right? There's there's noise, you know, they're good noises, but it could be potentially disruptive. But I went, I didn't go to the property per se, but I went to Google Maps and looked at it on an aerial because I was concerned about that sixteen feet, but there there isn't it looks short to the property line, but the the house that's on that adjoining property is way off. There's, as you said, Ron, there's a huge amount of woods in between. So I I'm on the fence on this one as well. On its surface, it seems like a big ask while they probably have a potential hardship argument to be made on the topography and the ledge. But you know, that's why this property probably didn't have a pool when it was built. Not not every property necessarily suited to have a pool, but so I I'm actually on the fence as well. If, yeah, I I was initially leaning negative, but when looking at the aerial photo, while it's sixteen feet to the property line, it's it's a much greater distance to anybody who would be potentially impacted. So I'm kind of I'm kind of I'm kind of waffling on this one myself.
Okay, so I have I have a question and a comment. The question is, can we remediate, can we ask for an analysis of alternative placements and and justification showing the rock cropping preventing any alternative? Is that something that's within the realm of being doable here?
We could. I think the question is, to me, would be, is is are there alternatives that could be less intrusive on the property line? And I think, you know, Christina spoke to that a little bit in terms of her view on either turning it ninety degrees or making it smaller at that point. You know, could they ask for a lesser variance perhaps by moving it a little or making it smaller? You know, I'll take it face value. I didn't walk the property. It was hard to tell looking at an aerial. If you're going to go, the the short answer to your question, Ron, is is in my in my opinion, is if you think they haven't provided us enough information to sell you on a yes, then I would suggest maybe they we either table it and have them come back with more specific information or we could deny the application and they can come back with a revised proposal that's either smaller or addresses the questions that if you still have remaining questions. I, like you, I mean, I take I take the gentleman at face value that if if they could have designed a pool that didn't need to go through this process, they probably would have done so without having to make this application. So I I take it at face value that there's ledge there that kind of prevents a different design. The question is, you know, is this this is that in itself good enough? I'm I'm I could go either way on this personally.
And I will say that this shouldn't affect your decision, but procedurally, we closed the public hearing. So they can't really enter any more information.
Well, I think we'd have to, I think technically we'd have to deny it or deny it without prejudice, and they would have to come back with a revised application.
Yeah, so I don't I don't think procedurally we can table it. We, I think, still have to take a vote on it. I mean, unless you wanted to deliberate more, but I don't think we can accept any more information at this time.
Procedure is be denied without prejudice?
Yeah.
Okay, so and all right, and my comment was very few people purchase a home without giving some thought to future expansion and looking around the property going, oh, I can do this over here, but not that. That always sits in the back of my head when I hear these appeals for variances. It's like, okay, you couldn't see this ten years ago that down the road, you were going to be limited by nature of the property.
Yeah.
Some people really don't know the setback sort of, you know, you maybe come into some money and you have three or four kids and now you really want that pool. Sometimes it's just.
Life happens. You can't keep what happens. And I don't know. Ten years is a long time.
Anybody else have anything to say they would, to help us fence sitters knock us off the fence?
The only thing I think maybe would cure the problem partially is maybe the shape of the pool. And I don't know, you know, if that's something we can even ask for. And I don't know how much it would remediate the setback problem, but instead of that kind of rectangular, I know she wants to have the lap pool, which probably that would necessitate the rectangular shape. But I know the kidney shape, depending on where the setback needs to be, that sometimes is easier to put in spaces where it's a little bit difficult, where there are setbacks that need to be taken into consideration. And maybe that that shape of the pool on that side can partially, you know, fix the problem without making it too small.
We still have a patio issue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm leaning in if a vote was taken now, I would probably vote denial with no prejudice.
Ben or Brendan, do you have any? Thomas, your opinions on the matter?
I was, I mean, I don't necessarily take everything that I hear at face value. So I was kind of tooling around on a US topography map, which is not super detailed and accurate. But it does give some info that there is definitely a drop-off on both sides of the property. It's from what I can tell from this, it's not quite as steep, but at least from like the neighbor, if you're looking at it from the backyard perspective, the neighbor to the right, it looks like it's about a fifteen-foot drop-off. It does look like it's a little bit, at least on the map, it's a little gradual. So there might be a possibility that it could shift a little bit. But it's just hard to tell without having a accurate topography map because these maps aren't necessarily the most accurate. So there is definitely a drop-off. I just don't know exactly where and how much it is.
Yeah, you're right. That's going to show you the drop-off, but it may or it may not be indicative. Even if it's shallow or drop, it's not going to be able to tell whether there's ledge or not underneath.
Yeah, yeah, it's just it's it at least lends credence to there is an issue with moving it too far to the right. But I just don't think there's a way to really tell without more a more detailed topography if it can be shifted at all to the right.
Okay. Ben, anything good?
I'm just, I'm on the fence with it. I mean, wondering if it's too much of an ask. It's almost, I was going to say it's self-created hardship, but it's not really.
Yeah, I I I kind of feel where you're going. And Christine, and I appreciate everything you said. I think what I'm sensing, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but what, at least from my opinion, I may be sensitive to offering some relief on this property, but I don't believe this application represents the minimal, the smallest variance necessary to achieve their goal. I don't want to be a bad guy and say, no, you can't have a pool or not every property has to have a pool because of its topography and all that. If there's topographic challenges, I get it. I just think if we end up denying this, I think the message should be, hey, maybe see if you can redesign this so you don't need to intrude so much into that. I mean, you could put more patio on the house side of the pool versus on the backside of the pool, maybe so it's a less intrusion into that setback. But, you know, is if that's, and if that's, if that's what happens at the end of the day, wouldn't you, what 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 have we really accomplished by doing that, I guess, is the other question? So not to, but I just on on paper, it just seems like a big intrusion into that setback. That's all. So I I think I'm I'm leaning towards where Ron is, is perhaps a denial without prejudice. Maybe they can tweak it a little bit. Still get a pool in there that doesn't, that isn't so into the setback. And that's that's kind of where I sit. I'm not trying to convince anybody. I'm just mentally wrestling with with my own thoughts.
I think we're I think most of us are in pretty much in the same camp there.
Okay. All right. So on the the motion on the floor is to approve the application. So that is the motion we are voting on is to a an eye is or a yes vote is to approve it as it's designed. If it doesn't get four votes, it would be a denial. Then it would be up to the applicant to make. They can come back with a if they make a change to the application, it doesn't preclude them from reapplying. So I think that would be hearing this discussion, depending on the vote goes, Kathleen will know how to counsel the applicant or Mr. Noonan, who's probably still on. So unless anything has anything to add at this point, we'll 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 call the vote. So the it's a motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's one. All those opposed to that motion, say aye. Aye. Okay, so it's, that is a one to four vote, which is a denial of the application. And I think the discussion gives the staff enough information to give these applicants a little bit more counsel and perhaps proceed in next steps. All right. Thank you for that discussion. Next, since we're not, Sarah's not here, we're not going to do organizational meeting. Just just take a quick straw poll. I know Sarah's not here, so we're not going to take a vote on anything, but just kind of a gut check on where everybody is in terms of remaining completely remote or whether there's an appetite to go back in person. We did kick the tires on this very briefly before the meeting started. In my personal opinion, I mean, I would do whatever this board supports. But I would not object to going back to an in-person meeting format. So I will just go one down the line and let everybody exercise their thoughts. And again, nothing's going to be decided today, but just for Food for thought, uh, Ben, do you have any opinion on the matter one way or the other?
I I think in person should be in the, um. Definitely considered going forward.
Okay. Christina?
I wouldn't, my, I mean, I'm pro remote hearings, just because my schedule with work and two kids. And soccer is hard to do, and this is a lot easier for me to attend.
Yep, okay, that's fair. Brendan?
Um, I mean, my my preference would just be in person, just because I don't necessarily have in the best setup here. Um, and I'd like to, at least get to meet you, you know, me and get to know you guys.
Yep.
I think it's, I think it's a lot harder to have more in-depth conversations, you know, remotely and kind of get to know you. My preference would be in person.
I I agree with that, I think it's it's easier to have discussion amongst ourselves when we're in the room and we can see each other, um, it's, yes, is is it easier? Uh, the, uh, I'm, uh, to to be at home, absolutely, and I get it, Christina, it's, uh, it can be a challenge. Uh, schedule wise, so I'm just just kind of taking a temperature, Ron, uh, and speaking before the man who want to speak for you, I think, Ron, go ahead, Ron, you can.
No, it's okay, I it, um, I'm strongly in favor of doing it in person, I think quite a bit to be gained by doing that. Um, I'm also in favor of providing a hybrid option when it's needed. To be exercised as someone judges they must exercise.
Yes, that's an excellent point, and thank you for bringing that up, I didn't mean to be exclusive that it's one or the other, that we could set this up so. That in the event we are meeting in person, a hybrid remote attendance is still a a possibility. Uh, I think in this day and age, when we have the technology to do that. Uh, it makes it easier for the public to participate, rather than coming down to town hall, or they can just pop on the computer. Uh, and for busy folks, uh, um, that may not otherwise be able to participate. Unless they can log on remotely, that option should absolutely be available.
And I did check our meeting schedule, we don't have another conflict in chambers this night, so we wouldn't be able to use, uh, chambers for in person.
Okay. Uh, Margaret, do you have an opinion on this matter?
Margaret, you are muted.
I can ask. Okay, now you can hear me. Yeah, I'm I'm, like most of you, I'm very much in favor of having the meetings in person for the very reasons expressed. But I think that the idea of the hybrid is a fantastic idea.
Okay, so let's leave it there, and I'll ask Kathleen to confirm, or through, um, Mr. Noonan, uh, just to confirm that it is. Unless you can do that now, um, confirm that we have the ability to do hybrids, so anybody that. Can't can't otherwise make a meeting can attend remotely, if that's this.
Yeah, we do hybrid for planning, zoning commission, inland wetlands, yeah. So as long as we do it in chambers, that's a very easy setup, chambers is. Set up to have a screen on the wall and things like that, so.
Yeah, so I thi- I think it's important to have that availability, because A, it helps the public and any of us that, uh, uh, you know, can't make a a meeting, I know. And when we've discussed this in the past, and it's been a long time, um, my recollection was Sarah was in in favor of. Remaining remote. Um, her opinion may have changed, but as long as that availability, uh, is there, I think we accomplish both objectives to to be convenient. Uh, and also have the ability to be face to face. So, um, you know, we'll, I guess we'll formally vote on that once we. When we get, if we get to the point where we can, uh, have the organizational meeting, uh, in elect officers, so, uh. Unless there's, are we, uh, do you, do you know, Kathleen, whether or not we have any business for? Um. November?
Yes, I believe we do have one application, and I know Thomas is taking the lead on the applications for November. But I do believe we have one and potentially a second one, Thomas, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, we're most likely will have one possibility for a second.
Okay. Alright, well, why don't we leave it, um, remote, uh, for now, but knowing that I think the 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 the. Appetite of the board is to go in person, but once we can get Sarah, uh, together on board and we can take a formal vote, uh. And move forward, and Christina, are we gonna, uh, see you again before your your scheduled leave or no?
My sca- oh, well, leave.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen.
Kathleen.
No, you are, you are not, so you will not be me for that.
Well, on behalf of the board, uh, we wish you all the very best, and, uh, we'll see you when we see you, so.
Well, I still need to vote on meeting minutes, I still need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm getting ahead of myself, but all the best to you and your family before we forget. Um, alright, uh, I am not going, I'm going to abstain from voting on the minutes of, uh, last month's meeting, since. I was only partially in attendance, um, so Ben, uh, if you wanna.
Yeah, I'll motion to. Motion to approve the min- minutes as presented. Or as provided.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will.
Very good.
Well done. Thank you all for your attention, and again, uh, um, Kathleen, all the best to you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And all the best. Alright.
Good night, everybody.